I can't ask any questions.
You can, it's just that the people here.
Yeah, like hey Brian.
Very careful, they have to file up.
So.
The ones that are found out, ones that are on the table, they're in the four tone. But snag those. And because I had them on my desk.
I'll see.
Okay, why did you ask? You have to.
And you have two.
Yep.
So the.
Yes, they're now. And I guess it has cases. That all jackups of. You have to be bad then. That's not a word. Basically, all they do is. We want to put their time on our.
Character on this.
It wasn't even. A lot of. Down yells music.
I didn't write it. Found up. He didn't.
No, no. The child was in a different position.
Okay, yeah. Okay.
I got you.
I don't know what it is about this case, but it loves to grab and it's a corner. I'm already afraid of my first one.
Those are pretty sturdy.
Yeah.
You'd be doing a lot to break one of those.
So it'll take me longer to break into it, though.
I think just those cases are like eighty or hundred.
Oh, sure they are.
They're, they're.
They're probably more than that, because I think I paid.
I have.
I probably paid close to eighty for the one I have.
I have one that's probably five years old, and it's, that's the old Otterbox style before I switch to the life groove. And I mean, it's still going strong. Uh, it's been dropped, kicked, it's all over, it does work just fine. Is this your first meeting with Mayor? I couldn't remember if we had one between there and.
I was short on last night.
That's right.
Like I've done a lot already.
You've been all over the place.
Yeah, except. I got tickets to the digital hosting summit on Wednesday all day.
This week?
Yeah.
I'll be in Hannibal for leadership. So I'll be out of town, but I, I saw that and I wanted to go, but it was. What do you have to do?
Yeah, I got. Emergency responders watching at one time.
Yeah, it looks like it's gonna be a good conference. I wish I could go. Yep, one of my favorites.
Hey, he's, you know. I saw him at the Remax convention, even at the Remax Lawson, the four convention. And he literally was on stage for about an hour and never said one cuss word. I was shocked.
Whoa.
Yeah, I, I mean, because I, I was prepping everybody going, okay, this dude is, he's over the top, so be ready. And he had one cuss word, and I thought, when he got all done, I was like.
Was he sick?
Yeah.
What's going on?
I, I enjoy it. I think it's a different.
Do you follow him or social media? And do you have you read some of his books?
Yeah, I'm really, I'm actually reading, I'm actually reading his new crush. I got an audio.
Is it pretty good?
It is.
I haven't read that one. I have, but I haven't read it.
But don't read it. Get it on the audio.
Oh, of the, of the pressure, really?
Get it on the audio one, because on the audio one, he'll add more to the book.
Really?
While he's talking, he goes, all right, I'm gonna go off script, and they'll start talking about. More detailed stuff.
Cool.
So I, I like that.
It's okay. Oh, okay. Got it, okay.
What time is that much on Wednesday? I don't know, I have it, I have it at the office.
There's a. I knew I couldn't make it, so I don't have it.
If I don't stumble.
I would say it's eleven oh one.
Okay, we good? Yeah, start.
I have it on my, I have it on my counter.
Jacobs.
Here.
Lund.
Here.
Watts.
Here.
Allen. Johnston. Here.
Get the wrong button?
Hey, now be sure mine's on silent now.
Adoption of agenda?
Move to adopt.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
And the minutes.
Move to approve.
Wait, at the time?
Yeah.
Who wants to take it?
I'll take it.
Yeah.
All right. Jacobs.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
I used to be in first.
Okay, proclamations. Okay, we have three proclamations today. We're gonna start with Historic Preservation Month proclamation. National Preservation Month. Is it historic or national?
Yeah.
Historic Preservation.
That one says national.
Yeah, it's national.
Same, okay.
Yep.
Perfect. Kristen.
Hello. How are you? Good, how are you? Good. All right. Come on over. Okay. National Preservation Month proclamation. Whereas Historic Preservation is an effective tool for revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character. And whereas the city of Warrensburg became a certified local government in two thousand eight. And whereas since two thousand eight, the Historic Preservation Commission has completed a cultural resource survey, multiple property documentation forms, and listing of Grover Street Victorian Historic District and the Holden and Pine Streets Commercial Historic District on the National Register of Historic Places. And whereas Warrensburg is home to two National Register districts, seven individually listed properties, and two local landmarks. Whereas, the Historic Preservation Commission is conducting a walking tour of the Holden and Pine Street Historic District in recognition of its recent listing and National Preservation Month. And whereas, the city of Warrensburg has many historic resources yet to be recognized. Now therefore I, Danielle Johnston, Mayor of Warrensburg, Missouri, do hereby proclaim the month of May two thousand eighteen, National Preservation Month in Warrensburg, Missouri, and call upon the residents of Warrensburg to join their fellow citizens across the United States in celebrating the historic resources within our own community and increasing public awareness in the importance of historic preservation. Thank you. Maybe next we do a haunted tour of Warrensburg. I have gifts for every one, so I'll just pass them down here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did a haunted tour of New Orleans. That was fun.
All the work on the haunted tour.
Thank you.
We had one.
Thank you.
We had one at one point in time, and then.
Really?
Yeah, the visitor's bureau was doing it.
My grandparents' house was.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah. But there was one over, there was one over Halloween that they did, you know, your counterpart. That you, who you took over for. Yeah.
All right, up next we have the Building Safety Month. I've been to safety conferences. My husband was an OSHA guy. So this should be fun for you. All right. Okay, whereas the city of Warrensburg's continuing efforts to address the critical issues of safety, energy efficiency, efficiency, and resilience in the building environment that affect our citizens both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster, give us confidence that our structures are safe and sound. And whereas, Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role in our communities largely unknown guardians of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, efficient, and livable buildings. And whereas, the theme for Building Safety Month two thousand eighteen is Building Codes Save Lives, encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of building safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, backyard safety, energy efficiency, and new technologies in the construction industry. Now therefore I, Danielle Johnston, Mayor of the city of Warrensburg, along with the other members of the city council, do hereby proclaim May two thousand eighteen as Building Safety Month in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, and call upon our citizens to pay special tribute to the building officials that contribute to the safety and well-being of our city, dated this fourteenth day of May two thousand eighteen. All right. Here's your. Am I supposed to give it to them? Yeah, okay, yeah, good. I don't wanna mess that up.
No, no.
All right. Okay, next we have National Police Week. You guys can all come up for this. Hello. Know a whole bunch of kids that wanna be you guys. All right, we are celebrating National Police Week. Whereas National Police Week two thousand eighteen is the week of May thirteenth through nineteenth. And whereas, May fifteenth has been declared as Peace Officers Memorial Day. And by presidential order, flags are flown at half staff on this day. And whereas, two Warrensburg police officers, City Marshal James Ryan and Officer James Basham were killed in the line of duty by being shot by a single assailant on April nineteenth nineteen oh eight. And whereas, a total of one thousand five hundred and eleven peace officers died in the line of duty during the last ten years. An average of one death every fifty-eight hours, or a hundred and fifty-one line of duty deaths in the United States each year. In two thousand seventeen, a hundred and twenty-nine peace officers were killed in the line of duty. And whereas, peace officers in Warrensburg and our surrounding community bravely serve the public and unselfishly risk life and serious bodily injury. Now therefore I, Danielle Johnston, Mayor of the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, do hereby commend our peace officers, recognize their service to our community, and hereby proclaim the week of May thirteenth through May nineteenth as National Police Week, and May fifteenth as Police Officers Memorial Day in Warrensburg, Missouri, dated this fourteenth day of May two thousand eighteen. Thank you.
And now Mayor, we wanna give you a blue ribbon that you can put on the antenna of your car, and if anyone else would like one, they're available in the lobby of police headquarters and also in the lobby of City Hall always.
Is that a jail free car? You're like, hi, it's all star.
Just for the week, sir.
Thank you.
You have the old star that said you donated it to the sheriff's department.
Good job, Mayor.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, next we have a public hearing. A public hearing on an ordinance annexing certain adjacent territory into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located at ninety-one Northwest Ten Road in the eight hundred block of West Gay Street, on the north side of West Gay Street.
Mayor and City Council, this is an application that's come forward from Colson Construction, who has purchased this property. Currently, if you look at, there's a map there in the packet that shows on the aerial photo, this is just one property on the north side of West Gay Street that, that is surrounded on three sides by the city. On the north, it's Cave Hollow Park. Back to the east is some of the very original subdivision in the Mary Debs addition for the city of Warrensburg. And then to the west are, is Hunter, current Hunter Hollow Platt and has a series of duplexes that have been built along the frontage of Gay Street. So this is between the existing, two pieces of the existing city limits. He has submitted a request for an R-two zoning designation on that, and that hearing would be held at your June meeting. So this is for first reading only this evening. Be happy to answer any questions. He would like to develop it with additional duplexes, from what I understand. We have not had any public comment received at City Hall either.
There's nothing around it, it's like.
Thank you. Okay, we will close the public hearing. All right, we have a first reading. Put some on the right one, okay. An ordinance annexing certain adjacent territory into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located at ninety-one Northwest Ten Road in the eight hundred block of West Gay Street on the north side of West Gay Street.
We will have this for a second reading at your June meeting.
Does that have, does that have a little house that was sitting on that property already? Or am I on the wrong spot on Gay Street?
No, I don't believe there's a house on it.
No.
There's not now. If there was years ago, I'm not, I don't think there ever has been.
One to the east of that, I think. Right.
Yeah, I'm probably.
I'm going out there.
Yeah. I'm probably in the wrong spot at Gay Street, so I know there's a little house that was for sale forever down there, so.
I think that's the one to the east.
Okay.
We have a first and second reading. Acceptance. Okay. Accepted sanitary sewer associated with Hawthorne Boulevard. Am I on location? Oh, thank you. Got it, thank you. An ordinance accepting the sanitary sewer associated with Hawthorne Boulevard Commercial Center for Maintenance by the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
Mayor, members of City Council, this sewer line is located on Hawthorne Boulevard Commercial Center area, which is also, for everybody's knowledge, be the Holiday Inn, new Holiday Inn area over there. This new sewer line's put in, it's a little over a thousand feet long. Required MDNR permitting for that. It has been reviewed. Staff has made all the inspections. On the sewer line is put in per requirements. MDNR has given us authorization, authorization to use letter for it. Therefore, the city now can accept the sewer line for maintenance. Staff's asking that that be done tonight.
Just for future planning, Slim, where, where do we stand as far as capacity on our, both plants?
Uh, we're running about eighty percent capacity at the West Plant, about seventy-one percent at the East Plant.
So we're in better shape at the East Plant than we are?
We are, but we have, we also have calculations toward what is developable area.
Right.
For the infill on that, so, you know, we're, we're designing it, projected infill.
Okay.
At that time, so.
Move to the second reading by title.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
This is an ordinance accepting the sanitary sewer associated with Hawthorne Boulevard Commercial Center for Maintenance by the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Jacobs.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
All right, up next we have an ordinance approving and accepting the second replat of Northside Christian Church Addition, a subdivision in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located at five hundred North Ridgeview Drive and eight thirty-five East Gay Street.
Several years ago, the church took all of the property that they owned and replanted it in a lot combination into one giant lot. This includes property that has frontage along Ridgeview Drive, a couple of properties that have frontage along Ridgeview Drive, the property right in the corner where their sign is, as well as the property at eight thirty-five East Gay Street that has the White House on it, as they refer to it, and property at the far west end of their land that has frontage along Gay Street that has a new driveway entrance and exit on it that you can see from Gay Street. At this point, they would like to do addition, a separate replat that would take the combined lot and divide out the White House and again, separate eight thirty-five East Gay from the rest of their property. They have an intent to sell that property, but do not have a lot to sell on. So this would reestablish the original lot lines at their original locations, so it'd go back to the size it once was at eighty feet wide and a hundred and seventy-five feet deep. Staff has requested a number of corrections, and many of those were made. Some then generated new issues, such as both lots have the same number of two A one. And really, you could only have one two A one, and you should have one two A two. So we are recommending approval of the ordinance with the conditions noted on it. At their meeting last week, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with four conditions that staff had, as well as they added a fifth condition to clarify the current zoning. It is not clear what the frontages along Gay Street are, and those are single families, so that needs to be clarified. The replat is a little confusing in that way. So we would recommend approval of the ordinance with the five conditions being met before the Mylar is printed and signed by all parties. Be happy to answer any questions.
Move to pass that, will be passed second reading by title.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
This is an ordinance approving and accepting the second replat of Northside Christian Church Addition, a subdivision in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located at five hundred North Ridgeview Drive and eight thirty-five East Gay Street. This is for adoption or rejection. Jacobs.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Okay, next we have an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a contract with Traffic Control Corporation for the citywide traffic signal update, I'm sorry, signal upgrade, project material procurement, pending Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission approval in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
Mayor, members of City Council, we're involved with trying to bring improved signals to the city of Warrensburg with this project. And looking at the cost of the project, we've staff found that there's potential savings by bidding the components out separately, separately. And doing that procurement through the city would prevent some of the contractor markup in this project. We've worked hand in hand with MoDOT to bring this together. It was a different procedure to do this. As you remember, MoDOT is paying a portion of the cost on the, our signal costs on the four locations here in town. And doing that, we brought a, it was a new purchasing policy or procedure that MoDOT wasn't totally familiar with and doing, so with this, these, both of these next two ordinances will have to have MoDOT Highway Commission give their final approval. I believe it's June sixth is their meeting. But we wanted to move ahead with asking for council approval pending that approval by MoDOT, so that we can expedite the project as much as we could. In the process, we had three bidders for the material that we wanted to procure. In our requirements, we developed a selection committee of people that were engineers and MoDOT representative, William Graves, myself, Corey Almhoff with HDR, asked, acted as moderator for the selection committee. We reviewed the material, quality, durability, made some contacts with users of the equipment, wanted to find out what their opinions were. Upon final review and scoring, and we developed, and I might say it was quite a tedious project to go through the whole process. Traffic Control Corporation was selected as the best qualified bidder, amount of five hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars. Engineers estimate for those components was six hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. So there was a savings effect there with purchasing through this vendor. Staff is asking that, pending MoDOT's approval, that the ordinance be approved in the amount of five hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars for the project. And once again, this is for the components. The next orders will be for the, for the installation.
This is part of the bond issue that the city's passed. What kind of timeframe are we looking for the MoDOT approval?
MoDOT approval should be June sixth. Ordering components, getting the equipment in there should be a hundred and twenty days out.
So there's no chance of getting any of the physical work done during the.
College law.
College recess.
No, we start out on this route, but we, we had some, some issues of, to dock the spec a little bit on our timeline, so. You know, ideally, we'd like to have it done by then, but weather doesn't impede this type of project very much.
Are these signals that MoDOT is playing, as I recall, there was some question as to whether or not they would talk with our system. Is MoDOT gonna allow that to happen?
They're allowing it to happen. We have, we have the ability to do that. We have, we have their hands on also.
Yeah.
Fortunately, the, the people we have that's gonna do the work are familiar with MoDOT and their, their folks, so. I think it'll, it should work out hopefully very smoothly for the transition.
Super.
Move to pass that ordinance to second reading by title.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
This is an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a contract with Traffic Control Corporation for the citywide traffic signal upgrade project material procurement pending Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission approval in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Jacobs.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Next we have an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a contract with Capital Electric Line Builders Incorporated for the citywide traffic signal upgrade project, pending Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission approval in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
As I explained previously, this is done in two components. This is the construction and installation side of it. We had two bidders for this project. Capital Electric came in as the lowest and responsible builder bidder in the project, amount of six hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. The engineers had estimated the cost at nine hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars, so we did get a very good bid on this project, so. Once again, MoDOT does have a cost share in a portion of this project. Third portion would be a hundred and sixty-two thousand, eleven dollars and forty-three cents. We're hoping that as soon as we can get, get the approval from MoDOT, we could move forward with the project, as I said earlier. So staff had asked the city council to approve the ordinance in the amount of six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seventy-seven dollars, seventy-seven dollars and twenty-two cents. I apologize for not being able to talk tonight, so.
So based on the last thing we just approved and this, we're about a half million under budget for this project already.
Yeah, but we're living in a change order world.
That's why I understand that, but right now we're a half million dollars.
Right now, we look fairly good, but you know, it's, you never know what you're gonna get into and what was left out. And we wanna make sure we get a, get a good quality job. We got one shot at this. We're, we're gonna make sure we we've got it done right, so.
Is this transitioning all of the temporary lines, like it.
Is this transitioning all of the temporary lines like at DDN 13 to a fixed metal structure? Are they still gonna be wires hanging?
No, they should be fixed poles on those. We'll deal with what we call a temporary signal. They've been temporary for 50 years, but.
Good. And they'll all be that way?
Yes.
Yes. Good.
What kind of time are we looking at for maintainability on this system that won't be able to get spares? I know a lot of the electronics goes out pretty quickly.
Well, that was part of our, whenever we did a review of the components on there, we looked at the lifespan that they've been used in other locations.
Right.
Talked to them, you know, we want to know how they operated in cold weather, how they operate in hot weather. Looked at situations, how often they had to be in the boxes and control panels and rebuild them and, you know, what their durability was on there. And, you know, all the equipment we're looking at and wanting to buy was supposed to be the best that they had out on the market today.
Since we're, we're buying the equipment as the city and we have a separate contract with the installer, how does the interface work for the, for the end-to-end checkout once the signals are up?
That'll, that'll go through our engineers. They'll run through the whole, whole process as far as making sure that they're all fully functional, if that's the question that you're asking.
We anticipate an add though, probably somewhere along the way to get that all done?
Could possibly be, yes.
Okay.
So once they start that, how long do you think it'll process? Once the 120 days and everything's in and we're ready to start?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to fan them to death.
He's not going there.
And I've never, I don't know.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's things I'll step in and someone I won't step into that one, so.
I know we're gonna have streets closed off or?
No, the, you know, the intersections will have temporary stops put in them, you know, but we're not gonna, you know, it won't have any closures other than a period of time when they're erecting a pole or something. But, you know, you're not gonna have that, that type of interruption for, for closure. Just these situations, like we had electricity off and the signal reversed back to a four-way stop.
We didn't have one of the bidders submit a letter because, as you talked about checking the longevity and those types of things, if there's any issues with the equipment.
Right.
Based on our reference check, there was one piece of equipment that had had an issue with another community. And so that did affect their score a little bit when we reviewed that. And they questioned that as far as the board and the group and the committee that reviewed that and asked that to be reconsidered. We did not. I just wanted to make sure the council was aware that that did occur. So if they have any, they usually don't complain too much further on, but if they do, just to be transparent, there was a, there was a, I don't wanna say a penalty given, a lower score run based on that criteria.
Because of maintainability issues?
Yes.
Yeah. And that's justified.
It was a difficult process, really, because they, they, both, all three of the vendors, but especially two vendors run neck to neck on this. So it was, it was, we've glad we had the quality of vendor.
Well, when the bidding's that close, you would expect to, you know, to have some questions that are tough to answer. But it's a good job. Excellent. Thank you.
Said we'll be passed the second reading by title. Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
This is an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a contract with Capital Electric Line Builders Incorporated for the citywide traffic signal upgrade project pending Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission approval in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Okay, next one's a fun one because it means summer is coming. We have an ordinance suspending the provisions of Section 3-14 for certain special events, June 6th, 2018 pursuant to Section 3-14B of the Code of Ordinances.
Mayor and members of the city council, Warrensburg Main Street is gonna be having their first ever farm-to-table community dinner on June 6th. As part of that event, they will be blocking off House Street between Holden and Maynard and having a giant meal. As part of that meal, they are asking for permission to be able to serve alcohol and asking to have the open container ordinance suspended from 1:00 PM to 10:00 PM on the day of the event. Crystal Reiman from Main Street's here along with Tina Simon, the event organizer. If you have any questions of them, otherwise, we are asking for approval of the ordinance.
Move to pass said ordinance to second reading by title.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
This is an ordinance suspending the provisions of Section 3-14 for certain special events, June 8th, 2018 pursuant to Section 3-14B of the Code of Ordinances. This is for adoption or rejection. Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Okay, on to other business. We have requests for additional items for network projects.
Mayor, members of the council, we, you approved in the present budget, a major network upgrade project. We have completed pretty much all of it this year. And I'm gonna switch to Gary here in a minute. But due to some of the savings that he's found in components and things have come in quite a bit cheaper, we have the opportunity to do more of a project this year. Everybody not happy to expend those funds on a next budget here. And Gary's gonna explain to you a few more of what the problems are.
Mayor and city council, one of the, we talked about the savings that we had. One of the things that we wanted to address this year is to upgrade the fiber optic cable between server room over to PD. That'd be just under $10,000, we're estimating on that. To get that done, this also will include three backup switches for three of the models that need to be put in to save some monitoring and refurbishment ones. But we'll have those directly on the shelf and ready to go. The change out process, if we lost a switch, they're usually invited normally a day downtime when getting that switch swapped out with Dell. This will get us one on the shelf. We can throw right in, dump the configuration into it and be back up right away. So we'll have one of each model of those. And then the other part, that would be all the bits and pieces for all those network sites that, where the physical installations aren't quite up to where we want it to be. We'd be getting all those parts and everything. So I think we, we have about $22,000 left in that for network. And this comes up to about $19,000 for all the parts and getting that fiber optic cable installed.
Is that a pretty hard number, Gary? I mean, you've cost it all that out.
Yeah, I think we can bring it all in for that. So everything that I had, we had listed out, we would go in through and pretty much wrote out inventory of all the parts that we needed. So as the prices are available right now.
Good. So this is upgrading speed and capacity along with a little insurance policy on the hardware? It does both of those?
Yeah, basically, that's, like I said, the current line's going over to PD or one gig fiber and there's no redundancy in that. So if we have a broken, something in one of those fiber breaks, we're gonna have to scramble pretty hard to get that back up to get one of them over to PD. This will give us additional fibers each floor. It'll be a, a pinpin run going each level, too, so.
So I mean, this is, I just want to point this out again because this is another example of our staff saving money, doing a project, giving us the ability to stretch our money even farther. Because once again, this looks like it's $22,000 that we had budgeted for a project that we were able to save. So now we can improve our infrastructure even more because we have more money that was available because they were able to get the parts at the right price, do the work at the right price. This is just another example of how well this staff works to save the city money.
Motion to approve.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Okay, next, looks like we have a request for funding from the Stevenson Fund for project graduation.
We've received a request from the graduating seniors from Warrensburg High School. And they did not specifically ask for an amount. In the past, we've awarded them $1,000 from the Stevenson Fund, so it's whatever you want.
Pretty much standard.
You wanna go ahead and make that motion?
I'll make the motion to give them $1,000 from the Stevenson Fund.
And I put Phillip Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have a resolution of the city council of the city of Warrensburg, Missouri supporting and authorizing the efforts by the tree board to apply for a 2018 TRIM grant.
And mayor and members of the city council, for the past seven years, the tree board, working with staff with the public works department and the department have been applying for Missouri Department Natural Resources, or Conservation Department, excuse me, Tree Resource Improvement Maintenance Grant. We've been successful getting this grant in the past three years through public works and parks. And the contractors that we hired into the project, we removed 70 hazardous street trees and 46 hazardous park trees. Trees removed or within 10 feet of the right of way of any street or 10 foot of any trail within the park. Staff has had some very good contractors on this project. We've listed trees out of the inventory to remove this year, total 19 trees. And staff, once again, would like to apply for the grant with the council's approval. With staff work on the project and kind service, we provide on that. It's a very positive program. Hopefully, we'll be granted, the grant will actually be on this.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Appearances to the council not listed on the agenda.
All right, good evening. I brought some friends with me.
Thank you.
So first off, I want to lead off with significant appreciation for the city council's support of the Stevenson Fund. I will tell you, the total that Jamie texted me right before I got here is worth $48,000. So that does hit the. We also have a donation from Bruce Moore, Moore Construction, to $12,000 in kind. So really, I mean, we hit about $60,000. So that's awesome. With gas, gas prices and steel tariff, we probably need that, right? They're gonna, when Danielle orders this, they're gonna, yeah, okay. I also want to appreciate Danielle coming in and getting up to speed and working with a group that's full combat social workers and we're passionate on it. So I appreciate that. And so that's been fun to get to know her. I appreciate a lot of folks. I mean, let's look at Saturday. I mean, we had the mayor in the dump tank. We had Brian Cook in, Casey was there. The, the support of the community is awesome. We've had, just in the past 40 days, over 90 different groups donate or redonate or we picked up pennies for play. Chief brought in pennies for play tonight. So, I mean, it's just been a thrilling ride and so we'll keep doing some of it. But one of the things I do want to mention while I have, you know, the floor and the spotlight in front of the community, that, you know, we've raised pretty close to $200,000 at this point. But I want to mention that over a third of that has come from individuals or organizations that actually have developmental disabilities. And so I don't know what other statement we can make that we want to be a presence. We want inclusion in the community, has embraced it. But, I mean, that's a lot of funds. One of my employees, Keith Smith, made keychains to sell at the breakfast blast, earned $16 that he put into the pot. I've had Ryan Cortella put $14 in, which is a great deal of money to these folks. And so, full on with it. And so, while my agency will kind of trend off, because we've fulfilled that fundraising obligation that, that they allowed me to make and I made on behalf of them. You know, I'm not out of Danielle's hair quite yet or the city's as far as. We definitely want to keep working on codes to make things more accessible. I definitely want to see as we go into parks and we renovate, you know, how do we add inclusion in it? I realize it's expensive and I promised Danielle that I'll help her personally continue to support with funds and stuff, you know, help do that because I believe as citizens, when we ask for extra, we owe that, that skin in the game. And I think we've demonstrated that. I have a gentleman that's willing to give a very significant additional donation if we buy another piece of equipment, put it in another park. So, you know, I'm not just asking, I guess, I think we've earned it. You know, I think we're in a place, as a community, I mean, you know, I don't know off the top of my head how many different groups or people have voted with their dollars. But, I mean, we're close to 200 plus all the penny jars, the food truck, just, it's been an awesome ride. And it's been thrilling. And I appreciate the Parks Department and the city's tolerance for letting me be in everybody's face for about three years. I'm, I'm kind of starting to get tired, actually. Even I run out of energy. And I'm about to hit that wall, but I'm thrilled. With that, I definitely want to call out my staff and certainly Jamie Grohe has been very instrumental. Melissa Frye and then of course, my right-hand person, Misty Miller, who's always the bomb for encouragement. So anyway, she's back there and so don't embarrass her, but I do a little bit. So those folks have played really key roles, all of my staff, I mean, a lot of payroll deductions. So anyway, I think I'll stop. I have a couple young ladies that have participated and I'll give them a floor for a minute if you'll indulge me. Yeah, go ahead.
I am, my name's Katie Wilson. I'm from Wheaton High School. I'm a senior. And I was one of Scott's helpers during this fundraiser. I worked very hard.
Well, but how many times did you, you did two, right?
Yeah.
So take pride in that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Come on, Ava.
Tell us about what you did, honey.
Go ahead.
Just step up to the mic. I know I'm scared. Just, so what'd you do?
I raised my fees.
Why?
Wow.
And you had your sisters giving you money, breaking open piggy banks and the whole community has come together around this. I mean, little, little ones as well as, as older ones. So congratulations, sweetie. And how much money did your fundraiser raise? Do you know?
That's about it. Any questions? I'm thrilled. I'm excited and I'm really proud of all you.
So when are we planning on it?
About September. But I do, I will get, they have pictures of me, my team does. I test throw some of this equipment.
There's a, there's a story that the, that when they opened up the pool, she went down the water slide first. So you're gonna have to go down one of these.
I don't, I didn't embarrass her. But I did, one thing is, there's a, there's a special roller slide for folks with copular implants and whatnot that move down. And I am an engineer, but I forgot that the more mass you have, the faster you go. Because I'm a pretty heavy boy, right?
You have a roller slide?
There is a roller slide.
Oh man, you put a piece of cardboard on that thing, it'll fly.
You don't have to do cardboard. You can fly.
Yeah, there was some massive ones in Japan.
Then there's a noodle swing that I definitely came out of. And then in Columbia, Misty and I raced up a hill. We slid down and she face planted, boom. So it has contested and it will be fun.
I'll be there. I'm bringing cardboard down.
Thank you for the update. Okay. We have the council liaison designations for boards and commissions. I know we are going to hold off a little bit on some of the appointments until I can get ahold of a few people. I know we are going to hold off a little bit on some of the, um, appointments so I can get ahold of a few people. Are we doing the reappointing council members?
Oh, oh, to the liaison?
Like to my, yeah.
I just, I thought you didn't have any of them ready.
Okay, got it. Nope, let's hold that till the next meeting. And I'll get with you guys and kinda figure out what everyone needs to go back on or what positions everyone wants to hold. Okay. Get back to the right page here. Okay, miscellaneous matters from the mayor and or city council.
I would just like to reiterate what Brian said to the staff. The, uh, the bond issue that the citizens passed, uh, I think was, uh, a vote of confidence and, uh, the work that the staff has done thus far on, on spending those funds, I think speaks pretty loudly for, uh, for the stewardship that, uh, that you provide the residents of the, of the community. We appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, city managers report.
Well, the group left, but I wanted to give just some gratitude to basically the whole community for coming together and hitting that goal of raising forty thousand dollars. I guess I would say on a, on a personal, this is one of the things I love about being in this community. Not just working for it, but having my family here is having a community that sees those things and steps forward and, and works together to get that accomplished instead of just kinda being armed chair quarterback and sitting back and expecting somebody else to do it. I think Warrensburg does a great job of seeing a need and stepping forward to fulfill it. And, and as they said, it was from all aspects of the community. And, uh, so, great work to them, that's a, that's a huge accomplishment that this community will need to benefit from for years to come. So, um, and then with that, uh, I'll keep it brief. I'm, I'm headed to, to Las Vegas, uh, end of Sunday. My daughter graduates Saturday and then leave the family Sunday afternoon in, in Las Vegas to go back to work. But, uh, I'm looking forward to the trip and, and helping, uh, sell Warrensburg as a great community and the economic strength it has right now and hopefully try to bring back some new business, retail business for, for our community. And then finally, I wanna introduce Joseph Hackney. He's our new management intern, uh, replacing Danielle Wolf's position. And has aspirations of being a city manager someday. We'll give him a couple of years to see and make sure that's what he really wants to do. Was definitely an impressive candidate and we're excited to have him here. He's already starting to do some great contributions. We gave him some pretty meaty projects and I, I anticipate that he will see some, some presentations and research that, uh, that he is preparing, uh, for our community here in the near future. So, look forward to having him here, uh, and helping me get done things on behalf of our community. And, uh, I don't have anything else to report this evening.
Alright, Matthew?
Yes, uh, the April sales tax numbers were, uh, down just, uh, just slightly, but we're still, uh, five point six percent over this time last year. Uh, and it's looking good. Initial numbers for, uh, May are looking good as well. If you notice, use tax is up sixty-three percent, uh, in April compared to April of two thousand seventeen. And we're up fifteen point two percent in use tax overall for the year. Logging tax also, it was only up one percent for April, but for the year, we're up thirty percent over FY seventeen. And most of that is due to Fairfield being in. But, uh, I think it shows that, that we, even with the additional hotels, we still are, are having a lot of.
Thank you, Barb?
I have nothing additional, just what's in there.
Excellent.
For an informational item, the, uh, street department crew has ceased crack bill operations today on, uh, Maguire Street. We'll come back, uh, and call, probably pick up on, because the heat's out and we'll go into that process. So, and procedure, we've also got to, uh, turn our attention towards preparation for the asphalt overlay program, which we anticipate the contractor, uh, doing that work, uh, for about the second week of June. Have to be the same contractor that's, uh, that has asphalt work at the Dollar Creek. What they pull from that side, they'd like to get city streets done, so. Definitely, we don't get our, asphalt overlay program down until, uh, late July, so we'll have that in order this year.
I wanna, now, reminds me of a point I'd like to make on that and that is just the benefits of the Dollar Tree project has been to our community. You know, we talked about the jobs it's gonna create and those types of things. Now, we have the convenience store gas station coming in, but we've also seen a benefit as the city with our projects because they're here and have a good contracting crew in. And because they're already here, they've been able to bid on some projects for us that have saved us a significant amount of money because we're not paying the mobilization costs and some of those types of things. And, you know, some of the quantities they're buying, some material out there, we're experiencing some of those savings as well. That won't continue on much longer because it'll get done constructing and then they'll move on to the next community. But, uh, again, staff is trying to capitalize on that opportunity now. And, and we're already seeing strong benefits from, from having that project come to our community.
Thank you, Gary?
I'm there.
I'd just like to highlight, um, last week, from Thursday through Sunday, UCM Athletics hosted the Henry Double A, um, baseball tournament. And we had the opportunity to work with the Warrensburg Chamber and it was a great opportunity. We were very successful in working together and to ensuring that the visitors, players, officials all had a great time in our community. We did, uh, welcome banners when they entered town. We did spirit balloons at all the hotels, um, the teams we're staying at. We did welcome signs. Uh, first day of play was Thursday from eight to eight o'clock tonight. Uh, the Chamber and W C V D, uh, directors and board members, Amanda, the welcome booth, we handed out welcome bags. And I got some feedback today from UCM Athletics, um, that they were, um, very pleased with, um, the response that they got from the visitors, that they were really excited to have that personal touch and that information provided to them. So, we hope to continue to issue opportunities in the future.
I had heard there was a potential that we would have hosted the regional tournament, but I saw we're not hosting.
We're not. Um, and it was already set up according to UCM Athletics, that, uh, Magnolia, Arkansas. Um, but it would be, been based upon the bid that they had provided and they were already the front runner.
Okay. That was awesome last weekend.
It was, the mules won.
And they won, that's what I heard, yeah. Very good, thank you, Danielle?
I just wanna echo the, the gratitude. Thank you so much for everyone that supports the playground, um, and for the community. We really couldn't build a playground without everyone and I'm so excited to get it started. Um, like Scott mentioned, we have, um, the contractor donating the dirt work. So, everything is staked out at the playground, but we have not worked in ground yet. Um, ideally, we would like to get everything started, um, the construction piece in July. Uh, but we were kinda waiting on the fundraising and we'll get with the contractor and then kinda see where we go from there. Um, and our goal is September thirtieth to have everything in the ground and being able to play on. Um, but for the L W C F grant, we just have to have everything by, um, December thirty-first in the ground and inspected. But again, our goal is September thirtieth. Um, and then just a couple of other things, this Saturday is National Every Kid in a Park Day. Um, that doesn't limit to just kids, so I would encourage everyone to get out and go enjoy our parks. Um, and then next Thursday, NASIC opens. We do have abbreviated hours because the school, um, extended their school year, so it'll be from three to seven. And then Friday is normal hours from one to seven.
Thank you. Joe, do you have anything yet?
Nope.
Where are you from?
I'm from Charleston, Illinois. Five hours away.
Okay. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Greg?
Know somebody who'd like for me to start my celebrate song again?
I need also. Just an internal thing, but you might hear something about it. We've suspended test, field testing narcotics today. Um, there's concerns with narcotics being linked with fentanyl. They can create a, a reaction with the chemical we use in the field test kits and they can possibly explode. Uh, we haven't seen anything like that in the area, but agencies throughout the country have begun, uh, suspending field testing narcotics. What that will mean is, um, for municipal court cases, it will just take a little bit longer for those cases to get to court if attorneys request, um, uh, lab tests to, for the marijuana. Um, all the other things are in state court that always require a lab test. So, nothing much is gonna change there.
Thank you. Alright, I think I still have water in my ears from a dunk tank. So, that was fun, those kids were pretty aggressive. I think most of them paid. Uh, it was a fun weekend in Warrensburg, it was busy. Alright, there's nothing additional.
Hey, Brian, don't leave yet, I've got you to, need you to sign.
Oh, no, I'm done. I'm not signing anything.